Select Board meeting for Monday, February 28, 2022. I'm Susan Verdicchio, Chair of the Select Board, and I'm here with my colleagues Mariano Gulliverbach, Rich Mucci, and Mike Bettencourt, and Acting Town Manager Beth Rudolph. And we have a lot on our agenda. Very busy time of year. So I think we'll just get right into it. And that would be the donations.
Yeah, before I do that, if I may, just want to say, you know, my thoughts and think those of a lot of us are the people of Ukraine that are under vicious assault right now from enemies of democracy. And it's, anyway, that's, that's all I wanted to say before.
Thank you.
So I move that we accept a donation of $2,500 from the William H. Johnston family to the Fire Department for the Fire Department gift account with many thanks to the Johnston family.
Thank you.
And we have to do a roll call vote. So Mike?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well.
Move that we accept donations in the amount of $2,024 from Lucia Restaurante, Brani, and Sharon Grodko, and Kevin and Paty Mon for the Public Safety Memorial with thanks to everybody who has donated.
Thank you.
Roll call vote. Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well.
I move that we accept a grant from the Department of Justice Bulletproof Vest Grant of $33,576 to the Police Department to assist in purchasing bulletproof vests for the police officers.
Second.
Roll call vote. Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well.
And I move that we accept a donation of $8,000 from the Winchester Hospital/Lehi Health to the Health Department to be used for the Coalition for a Safer Community Tech Testing and Health Department Emerging COVID Expenses with many thanks to Winchester Hospital and Lehi Health for the donation.
Second.
Roll call vote. Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Yes. Many thanks to Winchester Hospital and Lehi for these donations.
Has the link been, Beth, has the link been updated on the website?
Patty, are you able to update that link?
Yes, it's all set. I actually pretended I was signing in, so I went on the website. Actually, when I corrected, I could send it, so I sent it out to everybody again. So anybody who has it should have it.
Thanks, Patty.
Thank you.
So just should we wait another minute or so, or just keep going ahead?
Yeah, they're all, they're all starting to sign in now.
Yeah, I see people trying to come in.
To see more people could. Okay. All right. Yeah, so we've gotten through the donations, and that brings us to the Town Manager's report.
I'll do the appointment first, if that's okay.
Okay.
Yeah. So in accordance with Section 4-2B of the Town Charter and in accordance with the Rules and Regulations of the Department of Personnel Administration Civil Service, and as permitted by Chapter 708 of the Acts of 1941 as amended, I made the following permanent full-time appointment to the Fire Department of Brian Martinez of Boston to firefighter slash paramedic. I respectfully request that the Select Board vote to waive the normal 15-day appointment period.
I move that we waive the 15-day appointment, appointment period for Brian Martinez and the Fire Department.
Thank you.
Roll call vote. Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well.
Let's pull up my report here to go through a few
Okay.
non-agenda items. I just wanted to second what Maria said regarding the actions in Ukraine. It's truly heartbreaking, and I read a quote over the weekend that said, "It's a privilege to wake up and not go to war today," and that really struck home for me. So I really, certainly my thoughts are with everybody who's been impacted by that. So, thank you. Going into town updates, municipal building mask mandate is still in effect through March 14. The School and Recreation Department will be implementing their own policies for their buildings and programs. The town election is scheduled to be held on Saturday, March 19. All precincts will be voting at Winchester, the Winchester High School Gymnasium on the second floor, and polls will be open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Parking is available in the high school lots, and there's no parking in the neighborhoods behind there on Spruce Street and the adjoining streets. Absentee ballots are available from the town clerk's office if folks are not able to be in person to vote on that day, and there will be no early voting. The Winchester Chamber of Commerce will be holding a meeting, meet the candidate form on Wednesday, March 9 at 8:00 a.m. And the League of Women Voters will also be holding four debates before the election. That will be broadcast on Wind Cam, so those are March 2 from 7:00 p.m. to 9:30 p.m. For the School Committee and Board of Health Candidates, and March 10 from 7:00 p.m. to 9:30 p.m. For the Select Board and Planning Board Candidates. Springtime meeting, the warrant officially closes on Friday, March 11. So anyone, citizens petitions or other petitions required to be into the Town Manager's Office by that date, and the Select Board will be voting on the warrant at your, at your meeting no later than April 4 to issue the warrant. And the first night of town meeting is scheduled for April 25. I'm turning to Swim Winchester. So this is a project for folks who, who may not be as familiar with it, where a private group has been fundraising over the years to use a portion of Skilling's Field for an indoor public swimming facility that would not be part of the school's athletic facility. Anderson Craig reviewed that parcel to determine if there were any Article 97 issues related to it. I provided a copy of their opinion to the, to the board in your packet, and it finds that, and they found that because the town acquired Skilling's Field for the purposes of use as parkland, the proposed structure cannot be placed in the field without authorization from the state legislature. So I will be forwarding a copy of that opinion also to the School Committee and to Swim Winchester, so they can understand the steps that they would need to take going forward to have that being allowed to use on that, on that property. Updates on our construction projects. So we had a successful bid for the North Reservoir Dam project, which is really truly great news. The project came in under, under what we had appropriated at town meetings. So we are able to move forward with that project, and we'll be starting our planning efforts in the next few weeks. That, that project will start sometime this spring or summer, and there'll be some pretty significant disruptions to the pedestrian traffic in that area where folks are used to walking around the North Reservoir. So I'll help with some more information out to the board, and we'll be providing information to the public as a result of that. Transfer station improvements, the town has extended the bid opening till March 22. So we'll have information on that project after that point. The main street bridge railing project unfortunately came in approximately $100,000 overbid. So we're currently evaluating options for additional funding for that project to hopefully get it started this spring or summer. The Church Street Waterfield Road Project, as you may recall, that project was supposed to start last fall, and then we postponed it so we would not have an impact on the Christmas holiday season for the businesses in the town center. We're expecting construction to start sometime around May, May 1, and will last six to eight weeks. And we've set up a meeting for mid-March with the abutters, businesses and restaurants in that area to discuss the impacts and logistics. We did have one business who asked if we could possibly push this back into the June-July timeframe, and unfortunately, because we are using FY22 funds to pay for a portion of that project, we're not able to push it back. We really can't push the construction past the June 30 date. So unfortunately, we're gonna have to keep it, keep it where it is for now, and hopefully we can work with the contractor who's been very generous with us in terms of working out details and logistics. So hopefully we can work with him and the abutters to minimize any impacts on their business. The MBTA construction project is moving forward. I actually just scheduled today a pre-construction meeting with MBTA and their contractor for Friday, so I'll have a lot more information after that meeting that I'll be able to share with the board and the public in terms of the schedule. They, they are moving forward with the pre-construction surveys for any abutting structures in the area of the project. And then also finally, I wanted to mention that the EverSource 115 project is conducting what they call vacuum testing on their lines right now, which is kind of the last phase of the project before they do the final cable pulling and then electrifying the line. They'll be conducting 24 operations during the weeks of February 21st and 28th to complete the pipe testing. It requires them to do work at several manhole locations, and then they test between the two manholes. The work requires vacuum pumps and generators to run for 24 hours. So this is a full 24/7 operation. Once it gets started, they can't stop. I was just notified today that they actually do have to do some additional work at the manhole structure at the corner of Bacon Street and Church Street, right in the corner there, and that portion of Church Street will be closed between Thursday of this week and Sunday as a result of that work. So we'll be getting information out to the town, on the town's website, and also EverSource is notifying the abutters directly as a result of that impact. COVID-related updates. So we're still conducting our COVID testing clinics at the Town Hall Auditorium. There was one today, and then there's another one on Wednesday. They're doubled up this week because of the week after school vacation. Going forward, they'll just be weekly testing, as opposed to bi-weekly. And then there's quite a few great events happening around town. The Planning Board, Conservation Commission, and Climate Action Advisory Committee are hosting an event on March 3, looking at Winchester's trees. Our Sustainability Director is hosting an introduction to owning electrical, electric vehicles presentation on March 9. There's an eating disorder prevention presentation happening on March 2. And then there's a presentation by Winchester Hospitals head on March 7, talking about COVID over the past two years. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Beth. Anyone on the board have any questions or comments on any? I mean, there was a lot there on anything in the report. Yeah, there's so much going on.
Just, just Susan, on the EverSource project, Beth, if we could just notify residents and blast that out on our different media avenues, that'd be great. Because I don't think, for anyone's like me, I drove the same way through that detour like 15 times, thinking it wouldn't be there 24 hours a day for a couple of days. So
Right.
especially those busy intersections on Bacon Street and stuff. I think, you know, people know that they can avoid that area. It'd be helpful.
I think it was just you and I learning that lesson over and over again, very slowly, Rich.
Yeah.
The groundhog day.
Yeah.
You're not alone, I'm sure. I know. Um, right, okay. So thank you. So we do have a hearing coming up, so why don't we go ahead and go into that? All right, these are two hearings for alteration of premises or extension of premises for outdoor, outdoor dining and outdoor service of alcoholic beverages.
Yeah, so these were as a result of the approval of the outdoor dining spaces and the need to meet the April 1, ABBCC licensing requirement. So that's for Black Horse Tavern and Restaurant Lucia, and all the paperwork is in order from our side.
So Patty, do you have?
Yes, Philip is here. I can bring him in.
Okay.
Allow him. He's actually incognito, as Jessica.
Oh, okay.
And I'm looking for, I thought Jim would be here. I haven't seen, I don't see him yet.
Okay. So we can take them out of order. That's fine. So thanks, thanks for coming, Phil and Jessica Frateroli, to talk about the alteration of premises or the extension, the outdoor portion of Restaurante Lucia.
I masked him to mute. Oh, there he is.
Oh, yeah, he might be.
Yeah. Okay.
This is actually Jessica Frateroli. My mom is supposed to, my mom is trying to get in this meeting. She's just having trouble, so I'm trying to help her troubleshoot through the trouble. I apologize.
Do you want me to send her, resend it to, or I, I sent it to Phil?
Yes, if you could, because we both tried to get on, and then we got stuck on a March 7 link.
Right.
So I'm just trying to get her on the right one.
Okay, I'll resend. So I resent it to Philip. Does she have his email access?
Could you actually send it to anna.frataroli@gmail.com?
I see an Anna Frateroli already in the
Oh, oh, yeah, I just saw her. Okay, I'm gonna bring her in. She's in.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, welcome, welcome. Sorry for the technical problems.
I'm having a little technical problems here. At least you can hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, right, so I, you know, we, all the paperwork has been exchanged and signed and approved by town staff.
Wonderful.
And so we're ready to just understand, you know, find a lot, understand how to find, just try not finalize this, and we'll, you know, take comments from the, from the public and from any board members, but I suspect the board members have, have heard it all. But just to open the hearing and have the board members have a chance to ask any questions. Are there any questions from the board?
Absolutely.
And I don't see, seeing none on Zoom, I'm gonna say that if there's anyone here, any member of the public here who wants to talk, to speak on this and has a, has any thoughts, you're welcome to, I guess, raise your hand, and we'll, we'll have you elevated so that you can speak. And I see, let's see. I don't see any hands. Well, I'll take a minute. If there's anybody out there who's at the meeting to talk, to speak to the outdoor dining, outdoor tables at Restaurant Lucia, please go ahead and raise your hand. All right, well, maybe this is very cut and dried, and there's no one here to, oh, Mariano, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I mean, when you close the, the public part, I just have a question.
All right, so I'm gonna close the public part of the hearing. Go ahead, Mariano.
Yeah, so thank you for coming. My question is, is it going to look similar to the, to how you set it up last summer?
Yes.
Okay, great, because I, I thought, if, from an aesthetic standpoint, it looked great, and it really added a lot to the, to the outdoor space there on, on Mount Vernon Street. So thank you for putting the effort and expense. I know that you put a lot of effort into the design of that, so.
Well, we, we are very appreciative of being able to have outdoor dining. Clients definitely asked for it. And we think it really does lend itself to the overall ambiance of the downtown. So this is one of the good things that came out of COVID.
Absolutely, so thank you.
Okay, yep, I agree, I agree too. I think that the outdoor dining is a good thing.
If there are no more questions, I move that we approve the alteration of premises for Zia Maria Restaurant, doing business as Restaurante Lucia located at 5-13 Mount Vernon Street to add outside dining space to their existing license with the town of Winchester.
Second.
And we need to do a roll call vote. Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So that brings us to Black Horse Tavern. And if there's somebody here, Mr. Covino, for this, this license, that'd be great. The Fraterolis, thank you very much for, for joining us, and you can be excused now. So thank you.
And I don't see Mr. Covino on. He did receive the, we did send him the link earlier today.
And all the paperwork is done?
Yes.
So I, I guess I'll open the hearing, and this has never occurred when I've been chair, so I'm not sure how to proceed. But the hearing has been noticed and sent out to the public, so I'll, I'll open the hearing for members of the the board to, to comment or question. Does anybody have any questions? Nope. If there's anybody here from the public, a resident who wants to comment on this alteration of premises, please raise your hand. You can speak. And I'm seeing none. So I'm gonna close the hearing. And why don't we proceed?
All right, so I move that we approve the alteration of premises for the Black Horse Inc., doing business as Black Horse Tavern located at 32-38 Waterfield Road to add outside dining space to their existing license with the town of Winchester.
Okay.
Roll call vote. Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. That's good. We're moving, moving through this, and we're gonna have outdoor dining. That's good.
Well, Susan, if I could just, so Beth, my understanding is this allows them to go to the ABBCC to apply, and the emergency legislation expires April 15.
April 1, I believe.
April 1, okay. So we really need our, you know, anyone who loves outdoor dining, the easiest way to keep it going is to encourage our legislature to enact and follow through on that emergency legislation, because it's my understanding that the ABBCC doesn't have enough manpower to process all these applications and enough time for the springtime for everyone to enjoy outdoor dining. So we really need some type of legislative act, and a last update, I heard there was no action at that point, right?
Right, yeah, so they, I mean, they could, the, the town has approved the outdoor dining, so that, that they can certainly have outdoor dining, the outdoor service of alcohol, they will not be allowed to do after April 1, unless the ABBCC acts in that time before then, so. Yeah, I would encourage the legislature to, they did not, they did not, that was not included in the recent revisions that included the extension of the remote heating provision.
Well, Rich, thanks, thanks for following that more closely. I didn't realize the ABBCC was as backed up as they seem to be. So that's, that's a problem. Yes, we do need the legislature to act. So I believe next on our list here is a license renewal. Beth?
Correct. Yes, yeah, so it's just the, the comment before Victrolers. I know, really, license renewal for Toscano's Italian Kitchen, and all the paperwork is in order for that.
So I move that we approve the renewal of the common victably, common victualer annual license for Toscano's Italian Kitchen.
Thank you.
Okay, roll call vote. Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So that brings us to our business agenda, and the first item we have is the grant for David, the Davidson Park project.
Great. So that, we have two folks here, Catherine Pedavante and, from the Mystic River Watershed Association, and then Neil Price from Horsey Witten, who's the town's engineering consultant. I'll just very quickly give a brief background. So back in 2013, there was a settlement that provided approximately $4.25 million to reserve, resolve environmental liabilities related to the superfund site in Woburn. This was specifically for the restoration of Wetland Stream and pond habitats in the average on river watersheds. So really, that's Winchester, Woburn, and small portions of Arlington, probably. So there, there was a, there's a Natural Resource Trustee Council that issued their, that solicited grant proposals from communities and then developed what was called the Final Restoration Plan and Environmental Assessment, Assessment for the Industry Flex Superfund Site that was issued back in 2020. And we were, the town of Winchester was allocated somewhere between $500,000 and $600,000 towards improvements at Davidson Park. The first step in the process is for us to complete a feasibility study, which is what we're working on right now, and while we have Catherine and Neil here with us. And if there's public support for the, for that proposed riverine restoration option, then we would be able to move forward to access the remainder of that grant funding for design. So with that, I'll turn it over to Neil and Catherine, I believe they have a presentation to share.
Thank you so much, Beth. I'm gonna go ahead and share a screen, and then I'll pass it over to Neil.
So just while this is loading, thank you both for joining us. This has kind of been off and on, and it's finally to see, finally, great to see it moving forward and to understand a little bit more about it.
Great. Well, thank you, Susan, members of the board, Beth and Catherine. I'm Neil Price with the Horsey Witten Group. As Beth mentioned, we've been working with Beth and Meg and others in the town for some time on this, and, and Horsey Witten, all our projects. At Horsey Witten, all our projects have numbers and the first two digits are the the date, the year that the project started. And this project is number thirteen zero five two, meaning it started in two thousand and thirteen. So we're about nine years deep into it at this point. The last bit of active work happened in about two thousand and sixteen, so we're a little little bit of a lag here. Kat, if you go to the next slide, please. I think everyone knows the park, but just for a little bit of reference, it's shown here, north of Cross Street, west of the MBTA train tracks, south of Calvary Cemetery Cemetery, and east of Washington Street. Next, please, Kat. As Beth mentioned, the project that began in two thousand and thirteen and ended in two thousand and sixteen was a initial feasibility study that had three options that we completed. One of which is this one shown on the screen, which is the complete riverine restoration of the project. And the idea being, we back up a little bit. For those of you that might not be familiar, the, this was obviously a natural river and wetland system back in the day. And in the nineteen thirties, it was converted into a park environment that included a large pond impoundment and a lot of manicured grassland. It was quite attractive. But kind of went into decay with a lack of maintenance over the years. It was dredged once in the nineteen seventies. I think it's the only time it was dredged in its history. And it became, you can see often the top right of this picture is a Google Earth image. That's a couple of years old, actually. It's a little bit more grown in than that now. But you can see how the pond is infilled and with sediment and vegetation over the years. So the the point of the study was to think of options for restoration of the park that could include, one option was dredging it back to the pond environment that it was before. Another option was this riverine option that you're looking at on the screen, and the third option was a hybrid. It went to a a public process that was primarily attended by local abutters. And of those three options, the two that were selected to be advanced further were the open pond dredging and the hybrid approach. So those were advanced from this ten percent stage to the thirty percent design stage, and that's about where the project stopped. As Beth mentioned, we now have some new grant money, money from the natural resources damage grant that will fund only this riverine option that's shown on the screen. And as I said, the riverine option was not selected as one of the two preferred in the public process back in that two thousand and fifteen timeframe. That was, again, primarily, the interest was primarily from the abutters. So I wouldn't say it got a fair vetting in front of the entire town at that time. So one of the points of this, the primary point of this current phase of the project is to reevaluate this river option, since it's the only one that has funding behind it. Push that design level up to the same thirty percent level that those other options were done before and fully vetted in front of the entire town to see what kind of support there is for that. The NRD people want to make sure there is support for this option before they continue to put more money behind the project. And as everyone knows, especially in the in the current climate, when you've got a good bank of grant money behind a project, it tends to attract other grant money. So while there's no guarantees, there's a least a significant likelihood that this project, which likely might be something in the order of two million dollars plus to to go to full construction, would actually get majority grant funding between NRD funds and other grant sources if it were pursued. So that that's that's kind of where we are. Mystic River Watershed Association is leading really the most important part of this project, which is the public outreach to to get public opinion and feedback on this. So I'll turn it over to Kat, and then at the end, we can answer questions from the board collectively on the whole thing.
Thank you so much, Neil. Um, yeah, so, you know, public outreach and community, community engagements, always important, but I, you know, just to sort of echo what Neil just said, it's particularly important in this project. You know, as Neil mentioned, there is more grant funds sitting right there. And so I think it's, it's, you know, up to us to figure out if the community wants this. You know, there's possibility for ecological and open space improvements at Davidson Park. And if it's something that the community is interested in behind, you know, I think we could, you know, all collectively push forward and get funding for it. And if not, you know, it's better to know now than push it forward. So in terms of community engagement goals, you know, really, our goal is to gather input on, you know, particularly the open space improvements. You know, I think I'm looking to Neil in terms of ecological improvements, but really talking to residents about how do you use this space and how would you like to use this space? We're going to look to provide multiple opportunities for engagement, look to engage residents broadly, so abutters as well as the wider community, and also look to meaningfully engage any vulnerable populations in the area to have input on on the open space improvements. So in terms of the timeline, because of the grant funding, it's a, it's a pretty quick one. So it's between now and June of this year, the end of June of this year. So we do have a project webpage up with a survey, the final slide. I'll I'll share the address and and I, you know, encourage everybody to go to the webpage, fill out that survey, and please, please share it with friends and family. This month, so in February, just wrapping up, we're sort of, you know, introducing this to the town. So we've been to Concom already. We're going to the planning board tomorrow night. Next, next, excuse me, not next year, next month, we'll be doing targeted outreach to local organizations and begin to get the word out. And then in April, we'll, you know, put up some signage, some temporary signage at the park, as well as put up some flyers to encourage people to come to an open house onsite in May. And again, the goal of this open house and everything that comes before it is really to hear from people, how do you use the site and how would you like to use the site? And could that fit well with an ecological restoration of the site? And then mid-June, we'll have a public meeting where Neil and Horsey Witten will come and share, you know, basically, this is what we heard and this is what we're suggesting. And, you know, we'll see, we'll see where that gets us. So we were like, really looking to keep this presentation part of this pretty quick so that we can hear from you all, you know, at this, we're early stages here. So we'd really love to hear any questions, comments, feedback, suggestion you have, suggestions you have. And as I mentioned, the webpage is is at the bottom of the page, so mysticriver.org and then backslash Davidson Park with a dash in the middle. So I'm going to stop talking now and open it up unless Beth or Neil, you have anything to add. I'm going to go ahead and open it up too.
Yeah, I just wanted to add that I think the trustee council is looking for an endorsement of the select board before they would vote to provide us any additional funding for the design of the project. So really, at the, kind of after we do all the public outreach towards the end of the process, we'll be looking to come back to the board, to get a sense of the board or come to moving forward with this riverine option. And then we'll be submitting that information back to the trustee council and hopefully getting the remainder of that five hundred thousand dollars that we can use towards design of the project. That was all I wanted to add. Thank you.
Well, great. Thank you, Neil and Kat. And I I live very near this park and, you know, I certainly enjoy just walking along there. The, you know, the bike path has been put in or the tri-community bikeway has been put in. I know that a lot of people are just taking advantage of that just to get some exercise, you know, the past couple of years especially. And there's, you know, there's a crosswalk on on Cross Street to get across, you know, from one side to the other. And there's a soccer facility, Ryan Connolly Park, that, you know, people use all the time. I think the, maybe the word is is slowly getting out about Davidson Park and how pretty it is. But I've, you know, this is a great opportunity for the town to really upgrade the that stretch of the bike, the tri-community bikeway and the park. I got to say, at at one point, I think it was last summer, last spring, before school was officially over, I would know, I'd be walking and there would be like high school kids who would have gathered and they're outside, you have to be outside to play your instrument, you know, and to do any kind of music. And they would, they would have a little jam, be having a little jam session that I could stop and listen to. I guess just kids from the neighborhood. So there, you know, there's all kinds of opportunities for this area, even if it's not, you know, designated as a a field, you know, a baseball field or something. It's it's just a a great resource. And I hope that you're, I'm happy you're doing outreach so more people will will be aware of it and that we can, you know, pursue improving it. So anybody else on the board have any questions for anyone?
So, yeah, thank you. I mean, I think this is a great opportunity for a a park that gets gets a lot of use. I think, you know, anytime I I ride my bike on the tri-community bikeway, you know, in that area, there's always a lot of people using it, which is, which is great to see. I mean, it's been a few months since I've biked there, given the the snow and the ice, but at least last summer it was in heavy use. How does, how would this design affect the existing tri-community bikeway? I I see there is, there was a daylighting of a of a drain pipe that would probably, it would need the construction of a bridge for the tri-community bikeway. And do we need any approvals from from the state or anybody else to do that?
So I I can answer a part of that question for the first part. So yes, a bridge would be needed for the daylighting of the tributary. And the intention is to keep the the bikeway there and essentially its its same existing layout and, you know, format. It was, has only recently been redone. There are, you know, there's options to consider about the park in it in itself. Not a lot of options, because with the funding only being for this riverine restoration, really what we're talking about is how much of the existing grass space that's there will remain as grass versus be converted to wetlands surrounding the river. And, you know, the benefits of more wetlands is a little bit of more flood storage and retention, probably not a dramatic improvement, but a little bit of an improvement over existing conditions. A little more of a, you know, passive restive environment for relaxing and picnicking as opposed to, you know, more active sports on open lawn space kind of thing. So those sort of uses are kind of the questions that we're hoping to get at with the the questionnaire that Mystic River has put together in terms of what people's preferences are. And that may potentially play into the bikeway only with the fact that there is space on either side of the bike path, right? And so one, if there was a desire to go to a heavily wetland centric focused design, there's the option to have a little bit more wetland on the other side of the bike path, which might include more bridges than the one bridge that you mentioned. I'm not not saying that's necessarily a part of this, but it's, that's the only other real physical alterations I could see happening to the bikeway. I don't know the answer in terms of what sort of approvals would be needed with from the state with regard to the bikeway. So I guess we'll have to, as we get into this, that's something we'll have to find out about.
Yeah, Beth, I don't know if if you would know, I know you were very involved with the bikeways.
Yeah, yeah, I'd have to look back at the agreement that the town signed. I I do think that the town, you know, has ownership over it. Obviously, they wouldn't want the town to discontinue the bikeway in any way, but as long as we're changing it and a mayor that continues to allow it to be used in its intended form, I don't think there would necessarily be any problems. But we may have to, you know, file paperwork or something with Mass U T just to notify them.
Yeah, and I mean, I think, you know, adding a bridge on the bikeway over a day, a daylight area and wetlands would actually be a great improvement for the bikeway as well. Because it would provide additional environment that right now there isn't as much of. And and it also provides for habitat for for birds and then for other species that I think that would be a very positive for that area.
Hi, Rich, anything?
No, thank you both. I mean, this is a fantastic project and certainly has, we've seen a lot of use during the pandemic of a lot of people really engaging with the park in ways that they haven't before. And so I think that a lot of people are more aware and as Mariano said, the access to the bike path has been great. And returning habitat to that area is is really a significant improvement and a long time goal of a lot of people in that neighborhood and a lot of people that have been really engaging with it. So thank you. Looking forward to to seeing more and 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 working with you. So thank you.
Yeah, I was just going to add that, you know, one organization you may want to talk to is the Rotary Club of Winchester. I know they have a vested interest in that park and and plantings and benches that they've put in, at at least on the Cross Street side. So certainly, it's something dear, near to that organization's heart, and you may want to just consult with them as well and get some ideas on.
Actually been in touch with them already. They reached out pretty early. So, yeah, thank you.
And I'm I'm pretty sure that there, you know, you could think of other organizations that we could, you know, put on the list to be contacted so that their members could give you some feedback. Okay.
Well, thank you, everyone. We look forward to reporting back to you further when we've got some some more feedback from the the public outreach and and have completed the additional feasibility stage here.
Thank you, everybody, for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. So I guess that brings us to to Ten Converse Place. And there's an update about and discussion, not about zoning decisions, because that's that's really the the province of the planning board. But the topic tonight is the path along the edge of the site and close to the the pond there, which is also a bike, a bikeway. So we have some folks here. I see Dean Gillespie has signed up there. Welcome, Ian. And I think you have, you you folks have some slides that you perhaps wanted to show. I see Sean Sanger. He's raised his hand.
Yes, thank you. I'm I'm in a new format. I apologize. Thank you. Yes, Sean Sanger is with us. And I hope we also have David Tobenkin. There he is. And I believe my colleagues will also be with us, Jan Steenberga and Paul Sutley. I'm so, Chair Verdicchio, thank you very much for having us. I am Ian Gillespie with the development team. And the official reason we are here is to brief you. And Larry Beals, our civil engineer, who can answer questions, but notices intent and that sort of thing to show. So the official reason we are here is to brief the board on our thoughts regarding the town land that lies between the Ten Converse site and Mill Pond. This is land with the the bike path on it. So David Tobenkin is, should we, do you share a screen or that's what you're, oh, terrific. So terrific. If we can go just to the second slide, I think, David, when you're ready. See that? Yeah, can we go to second slide? Next slide, I think.
Should be, you don't see the site plan?
Uh, no, we've got the opening of the presentation.
Let me try this again.
Thank you, David.
How about now?
Wonderful, perfect.
Okay.
So this is not the detail that we, but this just sets the stage for what we wanted to talk to you about. If you look closely at this, you'll see a red dotted line around the outline of the building, and that is our legal site. So everything between that line and the pond So everything between, um, that line and the pond is yours. And as you will see, we, we thought that we would design this as a sort of seamless tapestry. It doesn't make sense to have the landscaping not be cohesive. So we wanted to talk to you about that. We would plan, uh, this would be something that we would do from a bridge to bridge. And we would be doing hopefully the Abor Shona Initiative here. We would be implementing the Abor Shona Initiative along the bank. So we would pay to design and install this plan. The town land would need both your permission and the concurrence of the Conservation Commission in a notice of intent and an order of conditions. Now, we believe it would be an elegant solution to treat this as a whole. Uh, so Chair Verdicchio, with your permission, we have, uh, two paths we can go. In the past, the select board has been interested in also seeing two or three minutes about the building. And then we can go into more detail about the landscaping. Would that make sense? Do three minutes on each?
Yeah, I think, I think that'd be fine. A lot of other things, but a quick overview would be, would be good.
Well, and we can skip the building, but we'll go, we can also go very quickly and then we can come back to anything that you would like to talk about. And at the end, we go through the details on the landscaping, which is, is your, your, your land. So thank you. Turn it over to David.
Sure. Thank you, Ian. So I, I'll walk quickly through some 3D views, uh, and then some floor plans, and then we'll, we'll go back to the landscape. Um, essentially what you're seeing is, is further development of the building, a lot of refinement based on feedback from, uh, the planning board, the historic commission, the housing partnership, design review committee and, and, the planning board's design consultant, Philip Chen. What you're looking at is a view from Mount Vernon Street. You can see that we've, as we move around the building, there's been a lot of refinements to the definition of the building with the base, middle and top, taking consideration of, scaling elements at the third floor and the fourth floor to help, the scale relate to the scale of other buildings in town. And then setbacks, on this side, uh, at the fifth floor, and you'll see that continuous around the building with some active, roof line, uh, in the, in the form of dormers that really celebrate the way the building meets the sky, uh, in response to the, the design guidelines. This is a view of Converse Place, uh, some development of the, of the public sidewalk. Partially town land, partially, um, on, on private land. This is the lobby at the corner entrance to, uh, parking for, around fifty-five or sixty cars at the moment with an automated parking system. And then a retail space beyond the lobby, both on Mount Vernon Street, and you'll see, uh, on the south side facing the pond. Uh, on Mount Vernon, there's a building lobby entrance on the right and then two retail entrances, to either a single or multiple retail spaces, again with a setback to mitigate the height at the fifth floor. And as we turn the corner towards the pond, you'll see these curved edges which we've introduced in a number of places. And then the introduction of a different sort of townhouse, scale repetition along the facade facing town hall with a setback at the, uh, above the third and the fourth floors. And you can see as we're moving around the building that there's really an attempt to create, uh, a, a different sort of facade on side to respond to the different conditions, uh, of the town, of, uh, the river, the more organic nature of the bike path, and, uh, trees, uh, facing the pond, and then responding to the scale of those different, contexts. So a view from further down Mount Vernon Street, you can see the introduction of some recessed balconies creating, outdoor space, balconies and roof decks for, for quite a large number of the units. A close up showing some of that detail of setbacks of, at the fourth and fifth floors. A view from, uh, in front of town hall and the library by Sandy's Pond. Uh, you can see it on the left side of the building, the building starting to inflect. You'll see some more detail of that to create this public outdoor space. On the south side. A view from across by Mystic Valley Parkway, showing the context of the building relative to the scale and of town hall. And then a view from Converse Place, uh, again, looking down, uh, Converse towards the bank building. You can see this three-story scale of a, of a, bay projecting, um, making a, a kind of grand gesture towards the main street bridge with an entry to this, uh, commercial space at the southern side of, of the building. Of course, the view from Main Street as we see it today with the dam in the foreground and the existing re-clad laundry building, uh, beyond. And then an image of, of what that looks, looks like with the building filling out, uh, quite a bit of the site, the height, uh, just slightly above the existing building. And again, the setbacks at the fifth floor to help mitigate that height. Close up view, Sean will talk more about the, the landscape and just to disclaimer that this does not, this shows the shape of the space, but, not the actual plans for, uh, the type of planting, the sloping and, and the use of this space, but, but just really to show you the configuration of the building, pulling back to create that oval space, looking back towards Main Street. And then a view again from the opposite side with the entrance into this commercial space facing the south, uh, with a view of town hall beyond.
So David, if we could go back just, uh, so I think for the board, this shows you, you see to the right here, your property, obviously. This is where we would have a couple of things going on. As your very astute, town engineer said to me recently, she said that bike path wends its way back and forth, from town land to your land and back to create some, you know, interesting spaces. And she said, I want a permanent easement for that. And it took me a minute and I realized what she was talking about. We, we have completely agreed to that. We, we agree that, both I hope that it should wend and that we should give you, uh, an easement for the purpose. So we have a number of things going on just in this view. We'll have an order of conditions and we'll have an easement for, for the path as it moves. So I just wanted to let you know, and you will be of course in control of those, but we wanted to plan it as a totality. And David, I think now we go to landscaping, right?
Yeah, just a quick point about the floor plans. This is the first floor plan showing that we do have commercial space facing Mount Vernon, on the north side. The pond on the, on the, um, south side. And there are actually live work residential units at this floor, with some individual entrances, both outside to, to the multi-use path and within the building, with the lobby on the, on the northwest corner and the entry to, the car, uh, storage. There is a mix of units that we've worked with the housing partner, partnership to, identify studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms and three bedrooms, with six units, um, set aside for two different levels of affordability. And again, you see at the fifth floor, some setbacks, uh, with open space on, a large number of the units at, at all floors. So back to the landscape.
Thank you very much, David. And Sean Sanger is with Copley Wolf. And I should mention at this point, also, I'm sure Sean, Sean will, uh, address it. But we'll be working in tandem here with Parterre, who are the town's consultants. And Parterre is particularly adept at the, 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 well, I'll, I'll let Sean explain it. I'll step back. Sean, thank.
No, no, not at all. Yeah, Ian, I can build off of that. So they've already been doing great work out there along the water's edge, removing a lot of the invasives and giving the, uh, kind of the visual connections, uh, back to the water. So definitely their, their role, obviously to continue to do their great work there. But also to be really smart about how that edge is established. Obviously, we, we love the idea of the visibility, um, and the, the erosion control, the stabilization of those slopes, making those safe and attractive and, all functional. And at the same time, to be able to obviously, uh, serve the purpose for what they need as far as any kind of water fluctuations, flooding and all of that. So obviously there's that really tricky kind of, uh, that slope that obviously sees a lot of different kind of water and moisture contents, you can imagine along that edge. So having the right people in there, making sure that that plant pallet, is, uh, is done correctly is really important. And obviously, speaking to the, the native aspect of that plant pallet as well. So it's obviously a really critical piece. We've had some really good meetings with Miles over at Parterre, as, as Ian mentioned. So we look forward to continuing that relationship. But I will kind of roll through these very quickly. Uh, so essentially, Ian kind of highlighted it, uh, and the perspectives kind of showed it, but, uh, we're, we're showing that kind of path meandering, uh, as Ian mentioned. And really what that's allowing us to do is work with the existing plants. The, uh, the large tree that you see there off to the right is the existing willow. Uh, and being able to pull that path away from that to, uh, to get some, uh, obviously a little more consideration to that root zone. And then what we're playing around with, uh, once again, is really trying to create those opportunities, those pause moments off the path, for people to kind of gather and honestly to be able to take in the water and the, obviously the, the broader green space on the opposite side as well. So once again, thinking of this as a very, cohesive, uh, kind of urban space downtown. It's obviously very green and the water is a huge element. So, creating those spaces for people to kind of gather, uh, at the same time, thinking about the, kind of the mixed use there between the bikes, you can imagine kids, bikes, strollers, walkers, you name it, but kind of being able to accommodate those on that path and creating that kind of garden-like character at the base of the building. And at the same time, what Ian mentions, really the, uh, the kind of the larger, more civic space that you're seeing there in this enlargement, with the path, uh, materials obviously will be an ongoing conversation as far as how long and how far the by two minutes comes down for the multi-use path. Uh, but once again, trying to upgrade that material as you get closer to Main Street and this outdoor kind of, uh, gathering plaza space, if you will. It's not huge, but we would love to start to get that tree canopy, above, and you can start to see some hints of tables and seating and making that a very public kind of, you know, pause moment along there that feels a little bit different than some of the overlooks along the walkways. And then likewise, what you're seeing there kind of stepping down to the water's edge. Uh, we've had some really good conversations with the folks over at Concom with the ability to once again kind of visually, but also physically, uh, kind of get closer down to that water's edge. And we could envision that being some really great kind of terrace stepped elements to kind of, uh, mitigate the, the slope that would be planted in a majority of that, that water's edge. So once again, just looking at kind of different rooms and you can imagine between those steps, the path, the open lawn and the, the seat wall that you're seeing there and why closer to the building. And a little bit more of that garden character, which is what you're reading in that darker green. Once again, being really sensitive to keeping those views out the windows, out across the open space. And once again, really having this all tie together. So, uh, I don't want to kind of go into a lot of detail. Happy to answer any questions, but, uh, that's kind of like at least the big picture, if you will, uh, for certainly the larger kind of public space. And then there's a few sections that we have looked at, but I won't go into detail on all of them. But basically we're really looking at a variety of those slopes, those edges, the relationships, where the path is relative to that water's edge, relative to the, to the building space and the opportunities for those green spaces and gathering spots. And those, just, you know, being done with different sense of scale, uh, so they're all kind of unique, but all kind of contribute to the overall enhancements of that water's edge. Once again, yeah, this is through the lawn. It's obviously the biggest one. We can kind of imagine that lawn being sloped. The next one is our tightest edge. Gets pretty steep or steep along the water's edge. And then as we start to move up, you'll see the, the overlook in the next one. And these are all really great tools. Uh, if you can, yeah, thank you. We're going to kind of play around with the scale of those overlooks, but, uh, kind of play around with those. And then likewise, the, uh, the garden spaces as well. So, really, once again, I think there's a great opportunity to kind of tie this, as Ian mentioned, to the, the broader overall successful green space that you guys have downtown. And, and Susan, I'm happy to answer any questions. I, I don't want to kind of, drag this out any longer. I know you have a lot on your agenda tonight.
Yeah, I, I, I was about to say, why don't we open it up for, for questions, um, from any of the board members? Anybody have any thoughts? Well, I, I did see something and, and I just want to clarify, that, you know, the, the bike path does meander, but, um, it's, it's, it's kind of unclear in some of the sort of, um, simulations. But, if you look at those in comparison with the slides that you just showed, if you maybe can, put those back up real quick. I, I just want to be sure that I'm understanding that the bike path or the, the, uh, the path for, for walking and biking is going to be, level because there is a big slope and the slope, you know, varies. And, um, and some of the, you know, some of the simulations, uh, it's, you know, the surface looks like brick and it's not clear if people are walking on brick that's in a, in a slope. And that's my first question. Uh, you know, we're going to be sure that the bike path is not at a slope.
Absolutely. This will all be held at the top of the slope or a little bit further back, Susan. Yeah, absolutely. We won't be, uh, encroaching into any of those edges whatsoever.
A little bit to that, to the, um, the, the town engineer has also suggested that brick is not a favorite.
Yeah, it's, it's very pretty, but in. As a walking or biking surface.
Town, uh, town, the town manager, town, whoever, whoever it is, it's the engineer and the, the manager telling us. Batuminous for the time being. So until we come up with something better, the path is, is batuminous. We tried.
But two minutes are concrete and not, not brick. Yeah.
Yeah. And we'll, we'll obviously work with the town, with DPW, with Beth. And where, you know, we understand that where there's brick now, brick goes back. Where there's not brick now, we'll, we'll talk with the powers that be about the preferences.
Okay.
And just, uh, actually you win the prize for being the first person to catch on to the fact in the 3D views, a little bit what I mentioned about the, the, the modeling of the landscape. Isn't yet caught up to the plan of the landscape. So the land that you're seeing in those 3D models that the, pathway is sort of laid over, hasn't been corrected in terms of, um, you know, the regrading that will be done to get that flat. But good catch. And you're right, it will be, it will be, um, you know, of course, uh, modified to match the, the building sections to have flat walking or relatively flat walking.
Okay.
Along the walkway.
And, and it's, it's great that you are working with Concom because they, and they're, uh, you know, the Abor Shona Initiative folks have done a lot of research on the native plants and how this should look and what would be, the most sustainable. It wouldn't take a lot of maintenance because it would be native. So that's, I think that's, that's great. I'm happy to hear that.
Sorry, sorry, Sean. Go ahead, please.
No, I was just going to say, uh, just kind of building off this, Susan, definitely the, uh, that the, kind of the zone between the, uh, the walkway and the water's edge will definitely kind of pick up that character. And what we want to do is, pick up on a little more garden approach as you get to the building side of that path, but making sure that plant pallet is, is really consistent. So it, once again, is, it's going to feel a little more garden, then a little more natural. But once again, making sure those really mesh together solid. So it's, it's very, uh, kind of consistent, if you will, in the appearance.
Susan, do you mind if I just ask a quick question?
Oh, go ahead.
So if you, maybe you could put that plan that you just had, I've got, this is probably more of a question for, for Larry Beals than anyone else, but the, plan, the design plans you guys have submitted to Concom show that you have a drainage outfall basically right in the same area of those proposed, I don't know if granite steps or something, on town property. And I did confirm with our council today that, that, that drainage, outfall and the riprap and everything associated require the town to grant you a permanent easement. So is that still the intended design here with this proposed change?
So, um, Beth, I can address that. I'm Larry Beals. And what we submitted to the Conservation Commission, we believe, is a pretty good alternative. And, uh, what we, but, uh, we would need an easement and, and permission from the town to do that. The alternative is if for whatever reasons decided not to allow that outfall on town property, then we would relocate it to a spot actually on the site. It would function the same way. Um, and right now, all of the runoff from the site sheets across the parking lot and into the pond. The proposed drainage system controls it much better. And we, we'd like to work with the town to have an outfall on town property with a necessary easement and, uh, but there is an option to go, uh, completely onto our site.
Okay. So that would, to the best of my knowledge, require town meeting action. So, may just want to think about that as part of your overall process.
And, and also to echo, uh, the comments on the, we got rid of the boardwalk as part of the bike path. Because, um, you rightfully so expressed a strong preference for uniform materials. So that's what we have now.
And Beth, just.
Oh yeah. Sorry. I was just going to say that, um, because the path is, we do have a, the town does have a small permanent easement right now at that corner. Like that ninety degree angle, yeah, right there for the bike path that, um, does, it does cut across that piece of land in a very small triangular area. So, for the part where the bike path or the walkway. So for the part where the bike path or the walkway would go onto your property, we would need to create a permanent easement for that, for that portion of it.
Yeah, Beth, and I was just going to say for kind of the, I think it was option one, uh, if the, uh, the pipe is there, uh, we feel pretty confident that we can integrate that into the design of those, uh, the, the granite steps so that they're kind of cohesive, once again, in that, uh, that approach as well. So whichever way that goes, I think we're, we're going to make sure that, uh, the, the integration of that into the design is really, is really solid. And we did hear from Julie as a part of one of our committee meetings, your landscape architect as well, the possibility of greening up some of those granite steps as well. So I think between the green and the kind of the, the stepping in those final sections that we'll be developing, uh, if that's the route we go. I, I still think we can make that all feel, uh, really solid as far as the design.
Yeah, so we would, uh, just with respect, with respect to the granite steps, we would have to consider whether that would also require some sort of permanent easement. Plantings are a little bit different because obviously that's something that's like a more temporary impact. And either
Okay.
You or the town through a maintenance agreement would be responsible for maintaining it. Um, I'm not sure how the granite step piece would, um, you know, play out in terms of approvals from the town and, and long-term maintenance and ownership and that type of thing, so.
We thought the granite steps, the granite steps were going to be more, you know, more problematic. So we took them out and when we were at the conservation commission, they, they asked us where they were, uh, if we could put them back. So, uh, any of this that gets to be too problematic for the town will just, you know, modify. The, the outflow, just, and we can get into the weeds offline, but the outflows, you may know, is for a storm event that is in excess of a hundred year event. And it's a highly unusual and it just takes the roof drains and, you know, allows them not to back up into the building and allows them to flow out. It will flow out at that point actually into water because everything would be flooded at that point. So it's just sort of a relief valve that should happen once, in theory, once every, you know, a hundred, a hundred and fifty years. But thank you, and we would be working with you. I think, Beth, we sent you a, an email about how we might do this as a practical matter. We'll follow the simplest path you tell us to follow. And thank you very much for, um, for being with us. I assume Chair Verdicchio, this would be roughly, we aren't looking for a vote, but are there any concerns from the bike board about what we're talking about?
Well, I voiced the, that one that I had and I'm looking at the screen and seeing if any of my other, uh, board members have anything they want to raise. Actual level, so yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I mean, the only thing I wanted to raise was the easement, um, for the, for the bike path, but I know Beth already, uh, addressed that previously. Um, are, are you also, I, I assume you're going to be providing, uh, bike, uh, parking, uh, obviously bike storage for the residents, given that, you know, there will be buying a, a, uh, unit next to a bike path, but also since there will be commercial units, uh, right now, we, we do have, we don't have too many, uh, bike parking facilities in the town center. So, um, hopefully you can help us by, uh, installing, uh, a bike park, short-term bike parking, uh, for residents who will use the bike path to visit the, um, uh, the commercial spaces there.
We have some David, I think, but not, I think we could always take a, a second look, Mariano, and beefing that up. That's a good point and, and somebody else had, had asked if we could have a water bottle filling station. I, I, I don't know, but that's the sort of thing that we would try and incorporate.
Yeah, so anything that would make it friendlier for Yeah, anything that would make it friendlier for people to be able to access the commercial spaces, uh, you know, through methods other than cars, right? I mean, um, so walking, biking, um, you know, a water filling station is a great idea as well. Um, as, as far as what you're looking from us tonight is, um, you're looking for a vote or a consensus for, uh, to put the town as the, the applicant on the, uh, letter of intent for, um, for the work that will be done on town property. Is that right?
If I could, as I understand it, you have a current notice of intent that shows work happening on town property with the, with that drainage outfall. Um, and then you'd be filing a separate notice of intent for any additional landscaping or other improvements, right?
That's correct.
So the town would need to sign as the property or the town, town needs to sign off on any notice of intent that's filed, even by a represent, you know, a non-town party for use of town land.
Yeah, each application takes three signatures, so there's, there's an owner, which is the town. We assume the town would be the applicant. And, uh, if you wanted, we could be the representatives on behalf of the town doing the, the work. Or, or the town could be the applicant, either way.
So I, I did have to counsel today and we, we can sign the notice of intents with the intention that, you know, we would negotiate any of the easements or temporary, permanent license agreements, however, however, we work out the details of whatever that use of town land would be. But, um, before we sign those notice of intents, I think it would be, makes sense to get a consensus with the board that this is something that reasonably the town would support in terms of the use of the town property for those purposes that they've indicated.
Right, so, um, for the purposes of this consent, you know, consensus, um, Mike, okay, do?
Yeah, absolutely. Sounds great to me and, um, thanks, um, Ian and Sean and David and Larry for being here, um, and, and moving this forward. I know there's been a few iterations of it, but you know, what I like about, um, this particular part of the project is that it, um, opens up the access, um, to, um, that area where there really isn't, um, anything pleasant to be there now for residents. And, um, you don't have to live at the building, you don't have to, um, you know, buy coffee at the, um, you know, supposed, you know, uh, store in the, um, ground level. Um, you can just take a stop off and hang out there. And, um, so I think it's really, really nice and, um, really pairs well with the work of the average owner initiative. So, um, it's a, you know, a pleasure to work with you guys. So thank you very much. And, uh, this seems like the right path forward for us. So, thank you.
Rich, how are you feeling here?
I mean, I agree with what everyone said so far, um, you know, I think the, you know, the details need to be worked out certainly, um, but I'm confident we can get there. But I, I think overall, uh, this looks like a good design.
Okay. And Mariano, you're?
Yeah, I mean, absolutely. I think, um, you know, the, the design of, of the part in the, in the town-owned place, you know, I, I don't want to, you know, the, the, the building is, is not the purview of this board, right? That's, I know, I know you've had a lot of meetings with the planning board on that and, uh, with the conservation commission. So, uh, and, uh, and they're doing their work, but the, uh, the area that is, uh, town-owned land, I think, um, you know, we had the conversation a few weeks ago, uh, about the average owner initiative and how, uh, the, uh, the average owner is an under, underutilized resource for us. And part of it is that, as Mike said, it's, the banks of the average owner are not very attractive, are not very well, uh, manicured for people to be able to see. And so any work that we can do there, uh, to open it up and, um, to, to make it more enjoyable for residents and also, uh, ecologically, uh, uh, better for, uh, for the environment, I think is, uh, is good. And so I think, uh, yeah, I would, I would agree with putting the town as the, uh, the applicant there.
Right, and it's, um, it's fine by me, um, and I appreciate your graciousness and, and, you know, working with the town and sharing all this with us and also sharing the cost of the average owner initiative. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. We hope it will be a beautiful celebratory municipal space. So, um, we, we look forward to continuing to work with you and this will also be the conservation commission as well in this particular piece. So thank you very much.
Right.
Now Ian, I couldn't tell this, this is a three-story building, right? Is that what we're looking at?
It's two and a half.
Two and a half, okay.
It's two and a half, right.
It's hard to tell.
That's what town meeting voted on in two thousand fifteen.
Right, perfect.
It has some, some very high ceilings.
Yes, yes, high ceiling. Now, actually, just so nobody misunderstands, the building as shown is, uh, four and a half. Uh, so I don't, or five stories, so I don't want to mislead anybody. I might take this literally. But thank you very much. I do hope, we, we look forward to working with you and it's been a great process so far. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, so as we work through these things, uh, we're now up to the non-citizen resident voting, uh, issue. And this is, as I understand it, is a, um, citizen petition to go on the warrant and to go on the, uh, to be heard by town meeting. It's, um, something that has been talked about. I can remember for many years off and on, and there are some, uh, other municipalities, most notably in New York City, that have been moving in this direction. And as I, um, put down in my notes, I think we have three people here, uh, Wei Han, uh, Phil Coonley and Marilyn Mullane, who are here, um, on behalf of both the League of Women Voters, Marilyn's with the League of Women Voters and Wei Han and Phil Coonley are with the Network for Social Justice. And, um, like I said, this has been kind of kicking around for a while and I'm, I'm, I'm glad that they have, um, put it together and, and gotten all the wording, uh, checked out and that this is materializing for town meeting to consider in the spring. So welcome. I think we got, yep, I see all of you are, um, elevated and can speak. I think it was, um, I think it was, uh, Phil who was going to lead us off, if you don't mind going ahead.
Okay, um, my name is Phil Coonley of thirty-three Lloyd Street, um, Winchester. I was here, um, about one year ago on the same topic. Um, I'm here tonight as chair of the immigrant justice committee of the Network for Social Justice. Um, with me is fellow IJC member Wei Han and Marilyn Mullane, representing the League of Women Voters of Winchester. The IJC and League are partners in support of the subject article. A key IGC objective is to assist Winchester in becoming a model for best practices around welcoming and integrating immigrants into a suburban community. Voting restrictions on voter eligibility in Massachusetts, including for local elections, are now set by the state. These include age, residency and US citizenship. However, the Massachusetts Constitution allows a city or town to seek exceptions on any state imposed restrictions through a home rule petition, petition, which is a request to the legislature to pass a special act. Many Massachusetts towns, including Brookline, Cambridge, Newton, Wayland, Andover, Northampton and Arlington, have already submitted home rule petitions similar to ours. Passage of our article would support local voting, of local voting by all adult residents of Winchester, irrespective of citizenship status, and pledge to implement this change promptly when and if permitted by Mass law. Bills pending in the legislature would allow all Mass municipalities to include non-citizen resident voting in local elections. Senator Jason Lewis confirms the passage of our article will help build support for eventual passage of such legislation. A criticism of this article is that it may turn out to be a largely symbolic gesture. However, largely symbolic acts are important to those being and feeling excluded. And such local voting changes historically have eventually led to greater US voter enfranchisement. Marilyn will now speak to why the League has supported this article and then Wei.
Thanks, Phil. Marilyn, if you want to go, go ahead, please do. You might be on mute. Marilyn, it looks like you are on mute.
I have been asking her to unmute.
Okay. Kind of a two-step thing, you elevate, you know, whatever the word is and then, um, everybody has to unmute themselves to speak.
I'm alerted, Marilyn's having trouble with her computer. Wei, would you go next, please Wei?
Yes, sure, of course.
Thanks.
Yep, hi, hi, um, good evening. Uh, my name is Wei Han and, uh, you know, it's a pleasure, uh, to, uh, present this warrant here tonight. And I lived in Winchester for nineteen years. I've become a town meeting member in two thousand thirteen. I'm currently a board member in Council on Aging and also, uh, co-founder of Winchester Chinese American Network six years ago. Uh, I started thinking about this non-citizen vote more than ten years ago because there had been increasing number of new immigrant families moving into the town. Many were like me, trying to learn the concept of, uh, residents self-governing in, uh, these New England towns and trying to understand, you know, what's like board and comedian town meetings are. And trying to find a way to participate. Uh, you know, many of these residents actively involved in our town and schools. They pay, uh, their car access tax, income taxes and property taxes. They're great community members, but, uh, the, many of them cannot vote in the name of, uh, town elections or, you know, town ballot questions because, uh, they're not citizens. So in two thousand thirteen, I asked the then-state representative, now, uh, the senator, uh, Jason Lewis, about the legal procedures that will make this non-citizen vote possible. And I learned it's a long, complex process, even it's only vote for voting in town elections only, but still requires passing legislations at both town and state levels. So, uh, we have been, uh, start working with the town clerk, uh, and town council, uh, more than three years ago. And we had a lot of learning and discussions, you know, and before that, it took a great deal of efforts and time to get where we are. And, uh, this is only the first step. Uh, I just want to, uh, make it abundant clear that, uh, you know, this warrant is for legal non-citizens residents to vote in Winchester elections only. I personally went through all these immigration steps, you know, from, uh, working visa to green card and then, uh, become natural citizens. It's clearly stated in the O immigration form that is a federal offense for non-citizens vote in a state or federal elections. So we're only asking for, uh, voting at town elections only. And, um, I just saw also, you know, as a first generation immigrant, I want to take this opportunity to thank Winchester town government for the continuous efforts to build an inclusive communities. I hope you all make a favorable decisions on this warrant tonight and, uh, you know, moving this forward. There's still a long ways to go, but, uh, you know, we're, we're ready to, uh, just move it. Thank you.
Thank you, Wei Han. Go ahead, Marilyn, yep.
Thank, thank you, Susan. So I'm Marilyn Mullane with the League of Women Voters of Winchester Steering Committee. And we were approached by the network about, um, having our town approve non-citizen legal resident voting in town elections, which really appealed to the League for obvious reasons. We're really about expanding the franchise. And, um, of course, as you know, the League was born out of the suffragette movement and women getting the right to vote. And then we worked hard on getting eighteen-year-olds the right to vote. So this is something that really appealed to us. We also presented it at our June annual meeting to make sure our membership was on board and they were intrigued and really interested. So we decided to put it on our summer planning, uh, for this year. As you know, it was going to be on the fall town meeting, um, agenda and that got moved. Um, so since then, we have been, um, benchmarking, there are two towns in Vermont, Wenoski and Montpelier, that now have, um, non-citizen legal resident voting. Um, and in those towns, they actually did it through, they can't do it through a town meeting. They had to go with a referendum question, which was approved. Uh, it was approved by their state legislator and vetoed by the governor. And they passed, they did an override and, uh, went and did get it through, um, even with a government, uh, governor veto. So tomorrow, in fact, March first, will be their first town election with, uh, non-citizen legal resident voting. And as I said, we've been benchmarking with them, so be interested in following up and, and seeing how it went. One of the other things we've done is touch base with town clerk Mary Ellen Lannan. In, in terms of what would the impact of this be? I mean, how many, um, non-citizen legal residents are there in Winchester? So from the census, uh, the most recent census, we're looking at eight hundred and sixty-three individuals who reported that they are non-US-born and not registered to vote. So the impact, you know, could be significant. Um, and we realize, um, going And we realize going forward that we would have to do an educational forum and alert people and tell people what this is really all about. So we planned something like that after the town election, before a town meeting. And it'd be open to the community, but really especially geared for town meeting members because they would be voting on. So that's my spiel.
Thank you all three of you. Are there any questions from anyone on the board or any comments? I would say, oh, go ahead.
I just wanted to make sure people understood that we, we have submitted a petition to the town manager today with plenty of signatures collected over the snowy weekend. So it will, and since we use the language the town council had had helped revise, I think it will be on the warrant, but we're hoping that we'll go with a favorable recommendation from the select board. We appreciate there'll be a new select board, but the more, the more momentum behind support from the select board, the better we think it will fare when it gets to the, to the town meeting, so.
Right. Thank you for that clarification. Yes, it is, it's citizen's petition, and that's one way to have it on the warrant. And that's, that's, that's the right term that you're, you know, really hoping and asking for the town, the town select board to recommend favorable action at town meeting. Mike?
Thanks, Susan. Thanks Marilyn and Wei and Phil for bringing us in front of us. I think it's important for this to move forward. And just to kind of clarify, we've been getting a lot of emails and there's kind of a lot of confusion exactly what's going on. I know Phil at the outset kind of described it, but there's no real enabling legislation at the state at this point, right? So this is going to be put forward as, you know, kind of a recommendation and hopefully gather support, you know, statewide to then have the legislature move, move it forward. But it's, if, if we recommend it and in town meeting supports it, it's not going to immediately go into effect, right? So it's, it's going to take a little while.
Right, good point.
I guess, Susan, I guess that's where the confusion for me.
Okay.
I mean, I've only seen, you know, in our packet we received, I think there's one email back and forth between town council. And so I guess, you know, an issue this, of this nature, this magnitude, you know, I feel as though it's a bit rushed, you know, to have, you know, get this one email on Friday and, you know, have to vote on it tonight with this presentation. So I guess, you know, and I think there is a lot of confusion. We've gotten a ton of responses. Calls, emails have been flooding our boxes, so it's definitely, you know, caught the eye of the community. And so I guess what, you know, so town meeting votes this in, what is, what is the process there? The state would need to approve it at some point, right? Isn't that how it works? So this is basically a symbolic gesture, right?
It's a home rule petition. It's for a home rule petition, right? So it requires town meeting to first vote on it, for then the state to enact a home rule petition.
Yep. And it was state-passed legislation and the town become, this new rule will become effective immediately.
So is there, is there a movement at the state level to make this, you know, a state initiative across Massachusetts, or is it just certain municipalities taking this up?
I think the more towns and cities are requesting and approving this, this, this request, and that it's easier for state to pass such legislation.
And it might make sense to have town council explain it to the board as well, you know, before we, you know, or before the board takes a position on it.
Usually, usually the way things work is some towns and municipalities pass home rule petitions. And then once the legislature passes enough home rule petitions, then they'll pass a local option. So then town meeting, then the different town meetings of the other towns can just approve it, and then it becomes immediate. But there's no local option yet. And then eventually, you know, if, you know, if it happens all across the state, then that's what it happens, right? But that's, it's like, it's like with our alcohol licenses now, right? There are no, every alcohol license, every time that if we want to add more restaurant alcohol licenses, we have to, town meeting has to ask the legislature to pass a home rule petition to do that.
Yeah.
Okay, so we can get more clarity on that. And I've also, so the community understands it as well.
By the way, I'm in, I'm in support of this. I know there's, there's a lot of confusion out there about, well, what if somebody moves? The reality of, is, you know, that somebody doesn't have like an attachment to, to the town. The reality is that voting in, in local elections is different than federal elections. If you're a US citizen and you move to Costa Rica, you still get to vote in federal elections in the US, and you still have to pay federal taxes. You can't avoid federal US taxes by moving out of the US. However, if you are a US citizen and live in Winchester, whether you own a house or you rent, you get to vote in your local elections. And if you move to Arlington, you don't have to continue to pay local taxes to Winchester, and you don't get to vote in, in Winchester. So usually, you know, voting, the spirit of no taxation without representation, voting goes with, with taxation, right? And all legal residents that live in Winchester are paying property taxes, which for many people are larger than federal taxes or state taxes. And so I think it's a, it's a, it's an issue of fairness to be able to, to elect the people who get to appropriate how their local taxes get, get spent.
Yeah, and I, and I would say I'm in support of this as well. I think people have come here from all different countries and should have a voice in, and their children are in the schools, and they're paying property taxes for the, you know, services that they're, you know, receiving and, you know, the, supporting the town in that way, and it just seems fair for those people to be able to vote in local elections. Something that I, I learned when I was on the school committee is how diverse the group of noncitizens is. You know, I'm, I really am in favor of the town recognizing diversity, and that's very important for our children as they grow up to be global citizens, as well as, you know, symbolically global citizens, as well as citizens of their town and their country. And, you know, there are, I think, I think something like sixty different languages that families report that they're speaking at home. They're, you know, the, the schools have to keep a record of families where English is not the language spoken at home. And so from that data, you know, there, there are so many different languages that it's, it's really clear that people are choosing to come to Winchester because of education or because of its, its location and are really very invested in, in the town and its well-being. And it seems to me that it would be only fair and a really good thing to do for the town to enable these people to vote for in-town elections. So I'm in support of it as well. So thanks for coming.
Thank you. Hope that our statements answered a lot of questions and the confusions. And we're going to continue to offer opportunities and forums to answer any questions, you know, before town meeting.
Great, sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
So that brings us to the Lynch School Building Project. And we had a couple of things that we had discussed at the last meeting that we wanted to kind of clarify and solidify, those being the, the concept of having a traffic study before, you know, in conjunction with the building project. And also, we discussed the sustainability and the net zero, net zero status that we, our climate action plan would, you know, kind of anticipate. And we wanted to be sure is, is built into the project as well. So maybe if, Beth, if you would kind of walk us through some of this.
Sure. Yeah, so the first piece is the traffic study. Our recommendation is that the board consider placing a warrant on a springtime meeting to fund a traffic study in the area surrounding Lynch School. So the, the school has a traffic engineer on their team, but it's limited. Their scope is limited really to the circulation immediately around this, in and without, around the school property. The goal of this would be to do a more, a larger kind of corridor study that looks at both vehicular travel, pedestrian travel, and bike travel in the corridors along either side of the Lynch School. So the Pond Street corridor, and then the Horn Pond, Sylvester Ave, Canal Street, Millsack Street area. We did have Tool complete a quarter study several years ago on Woodside Road, which is a primary walking route for many kids to Lynch School. So we do have some recommendations from that study already. But this, this study would expand the scope to really kind of capture the two ways traffic, but traffic, cars, pedestrians, and bikes come into the school. So that's our recommendation, and we can accept if the board wants to move forward, can work with Tool to develop the scope of work and get a fee proposal ready for town meeting. And you would just need to vote to approve to put the warrant article on either this evening or at your meeting next week.
I mean, we did discuss it pretty much in detail at the last meeting. You know, Lynch is kind of unique in that it has two access points. That seems to be not the approach that most schools and traffic engineers would recommend these days. They want, you know, you want one way, one way in, one way out for the vehicular traffic. You want to be sure that the students are safe and people are safe walking to school. So, you know, I, I think it's a good idea to have the traffic study built into the whole project and put it on the warrant.
Sounds like a no-brainer to me, and I think it's kind of what we've been looking towards with prior projects and the lessons that we've learned, that, you know, we need to, that this, this is part of a school renovation or construction project, especially when we're increasing enrollment, right? So we, we don't even really feel what it's going to be like there with the present enrollment at the school, right? It's, it's going to be a lot more intense getting in and out of there, and there are real safety risks. So it makes sense to me, and I think that the town meeting and residents have supported this in the past. And when we did a, a project like this at McCall as part of the project there, it was, I think it turned out great and was very necessary for a really difficult area. So I'm all for it.
Yeah, I mean, I would agree. The only thing, Beth, two questions. So would this be a two-phase kind of traffic study? One for during construction? Because I think, you know, it's going to be, you know, real tight over there during construction and then for after construction with.
So my, my understanding is that the traffic engineer that's on the, the team, the like design team, it's Howard Steinhugsen who's the traffic engineer that's on that team, would be addressing kind of the construction level, traffic impacts. This would be more looking at long-term solutions, similar to what we did in size and scope with the McCall School project in those kind of two corridors on either side of the school. The goal of really trying to increase the safety for pedestrian and bike traffic so that we can cut down the amount of vehicular traffic we see coming in and out of school.
I mean, some of the videos coming out of Lynch at Pickup are mind-boggling to see. Cars going each different direction, sideways, frontwards, backwards. So, you know, I think, yeah, this is a no-brainer, as Mike says.
If you had flying cars, it'd be worse, you know, at the third dimension there. Yeah, I mean, I think this also, you know, when we did McCall, one thing is we didn't know how much it would cost, so we just added half a million dollars to, to the debt exclusion. But I, I think having it done before we do the debt exclusion will give us an idea of how much the construction will cost. So we have a better idea of what to put in the debt exclusion. And also, in this case, it makes sense to do the traffic study before construction because traffic will be very different during construction. So if we want to know what we will need to build, we really should do it now before we start building. So absolutely. And yeah, Susan, when you're ready, I have the motion here.
Yeah, I think we're ready for a motion.
I think, Susan, I see Ben Keeler from T-TAC has his hand up too, just, we wanted to.
Okay, just, sure, Ben. Sorry, I didn't see your hand up. But go ahead.
Yeah, just very quickly, I know you guys are busy. One, obviously very supportive and appreciate everyone's efforts to push forward on the traffic study. The thing that I would just mention for this group, and again, my, my goal here is not to intentionally just expand scope, but to bring specific attention to the fact that a number of schoolchildren will actually be, I believe, from in, you know, as a result of redistricting, will be attending Lynch School that actually live on the east side of Main Street. And it is an area that, you know, we focused on before. I know that it's come up a number of times as part of our discussion of the Pearl Street Corridor specifically, is how we have, you know, built up access to allow children and walking and bikers to make that transition easier. So while I recognize that the traffic study needs to be, you know, specifically right in the Lynch area, I would encourage the board just to take a slightly broader view to accommodate those that may be needing to, we, we should accommodate walkers and bikers that are also coming from the other side of Main Street as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Ben. That's a very good point. Yes. All right.
All right. So I move that we authorize the town manager to develop an article for the spring town meeting warrant to complete a traffic study for the areas surrounding the Lynch School and work with Tool Designs to develop a scope of work that evaluates vehicle, pedestrian, and bike safety on the east and west sides of the school, including the Pond Street Corridor and the Horn Brook Pond, Sylvester Avenue, Canal Street, Millsack, and Millsack Street neighborhoods.
Second.
Roll call vote. Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Ariano?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well.
I think. And the other piece, we talked quite a bit at the last meeting, was just about the sustainability aspects of the project. And so just kind of revising the conversation about whether or not the board wanted to adopt some sort of policy or position regarding the design objectives to include the project, that the project be consistent with the town's commitment to sustainability and its 2020 climate action plan. So there's a little bit more language in my mind that went to the board, but.
Yeah, I've got to say, I think this is important to do. You know, the EPBC is in charge of the, is the building committee for it. And, you know, they have their role, and we don't want to impinge on their role. But I just think it needs to be clearly understood, you know, among the co-equal branches of the town government, that the, the climate action plan is something that we all should be observing and trying to move forward. And that, you know, we don't want the community, and that the communication has to be set up, you know, from as soon, as soon as, as early as possible in the building process. Because this, this building is, as, as Beth put in her memo or her report, it really is a once-in-a-generation opportunity, and we really have to get it right. So that's said my piece there.
Yeah, I mean, I think the language clarifies as a motion, as a policy of the select board, what we all agreed or came to a consensus at the last meeting. And I agree, the climate action plan and procurement and, in the end, energy costs are under the purview of this board. So I think that setting this policy makes sense.
Any other comments? Anyone?
Yeah, I'm in agreement. I, you know, as Maro said, we discussed this before. I think we've been on the same page for a while. I mean, I think net zero is kind of the floor, not the ceiling for. I mean, I think net zero is kind of the floor, not the ceiling for this building. And so I hope we're considering all options and a lot of schools being built now that were designed even several years ago aren't at positive, right? So I think that that's something to strive towards as well. Certainly there are financial limitations, but I just want to make it clear, I think that zero is the floor for us. So thank you.
Yeah, I agree with what everyone said.
All right. Thank you. Do you have a motion?
Yeah. So I move that we establish a policy of the select board to ensure the Lynch School project, a once in a generation project, will be consistent with Winchester's commitment to sustainability and its 2020 climate action plan, the CAP, and that the sign will strive for net zero energy to the extent feasible. At a minimum, the building should be all electric with no onsite combustion of fossil fuels and highly energy efficient, energy use intensity of 25 or less. Additional sustainable, sustainable design elements should include electric vehicle charging stations, maximum solar photovoltaic production and a facility designed that maximizes material waste reduction, recycling and composting.
Second.
Roll call vote. Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So that's good. That brings us to the all hazards mitigation plan.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Sorry, Susan, just on the Lynch project, just
Yeah.
just an update, if there is one. You know, I was at the finance committee meeting a couple of weeks ago where Beth was presenting the budget and one of the members raised an issue about possibly the carriage house and the borrowing over, borrowing to fund the carriage house. At the time Beth had, it sounded like no one had been in contact with your office on that or anything. Has, has anything changed on that? Have you heard anything about that?
Yeah, I mean, we haven't been contacted directly by the school committee or EFPC, but we have heard that there's some conversations about potential borrowing for some portion of it. I'm not sure what the details are, but it is something I think that needs to be discussed further. So we understand what the plan is as part of the school building project and then going into town meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think there was some discussion of a warrant article being drafted as well. So I mean, I, I mean, we haven't heard anything about the carriage house since, you know, many months ago when they were before us, you know, talking about Parkhurst and and their plans with the carriage house. But, you know, it's been a while. And so it's a little concerning that we're getting this late in the game to the warrant closing and, and no one's come back to this board on that. Because I think in our purview is the borrowing authorization. So.
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree with Rich. I mean, it's hearing kind of rumblings about this not being contacted directly, especially for a borrowing authorization that's not through a debt exclusion, right? So I think we've been discussing how difficult the financial picture is for us over the next few years. And to add another, you know, three or four thousand, three or $400,000 debt service, I think is something that we hadn't planned for and would not be looked favorably upon by Moody's, who's already kind of asking some questions of us on our bond rating. So I hope we can get to bottom of it. But it seems like there's an end run around the select board and the school committee as well. So just seems a little bizarre. So I look forward to hearing more about it, I guess, at our meeting next week.
Yeah, I just say that we did not, in the three year model that we developed or 23 or the three year, three year model beyond did not include any funds towards payment of debt service for our carriage house.
That's pretty bleak outlook, I mean, that we have. I mean, that modeling is scary. And, you know, this would certainly, you know, add to that problem that we need to solve. So I think we just need to be all on the same page on this.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure that that amount. I mean, we've ever really just gone directly from operating debt without any discussion of, you know, of establishing either fees or, or some other way to, to cover that or, you know, from stabilization funds or things like that. But to just put that, that level of, of debt that is not excluded is something that definitely is, is unprecedented in the last decade, at least for me.
So I mean, I guess the warrant closes March 11th. I mean, I don't know if we have something on the agenda for next Monday or not, but it was certainly an update. Wanted.
At least an update. Yes.
I mean, obviously any board can put anything on the, on the warrant, but if, if that kind of article is on the warrant, I think, you know, I would, I would be recommending to town meeting that they vote no on it.
We can reach out and see if we can get an update from our perspective, parties at next meeting.
Yeah, okay. So all hazards mitigation.
Sure. So the town is required to have what's called an all hazards mitigation plan that looks at all hazards that could happen. So weather related, flooding related, heat related. We're required by the state and federal government to have a, a plan in effect. We've been working since last spring to update our current plan. And we now have a revised document that's available to be placed for public comment. So my plan is to have that document put up on the town's website tomorrow and to have a two week public comment period where people be able to submit comments to me and we would make any revisions or respond to those folks about why we would not be making any changes based on our comment. And then after that, we'll be submitting the document to the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency for their review. Typically that, that process takes a little bit of time. And then there's a formal review process. Once the document has been vetted by NEMA and FEMA, for it to come back to the board for a formal adoption process. And then it's officially in effect. So if this is really just an FYI and an opportunity for, for any board members to ask questions about the draft document. But it will be placed, as I said, up on the town's website tomorrow for public comment.
I took a look at the draft. It's very comprehensive and I'm glad that this is required and that we, we do this and have this in place.
Yeah, I was gonna say the same thing, Susan. It's very thorough, over 80 pages. Yeah, I didn't get to read the whole thing. But you just said, you know, if anyone has any public comments, but very good job in getting this done. And certainly I'm glad Susan says we have to do this. So.
Great. Okay, thank you.
So on ARPA funding, as Beth noted in her report to us, there's a water quality issue that has been noted and DPW has done some testing and research about what it's, what's causing it and what would, would fix it. And since it is a, you know, water quality issue for people, you know, using town water, a large, you know, number of residents. Beth has put it on the agenda here for us to use a chunk of ARPA money to get that going just because it's been so long.
Right. Yeah. So Jay Gill is here, DPW director and Bruce Adams, who is from Weston Sampson. But yeah, the, the gist of it is that because of the stratification in the reservoir, we have an issue with manganese that affects the water quality to an expanding number of residents in Winchester. And so I'll let Jay explain a little bit more about what they're proposing.
Yeah, hi, everyone. Thanks for having us. I'm also here with Jimmy Gibbons, Operations Manager. Is Bruce, Bruce Adams on also?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
So I'll just do a brief discussion on what's been happening. So in the past few years, there's been some discoloration of the town's water system in the middle O system. The middle O system, the best way to describe it is from Cambridge Street to Washington Street and that whole area. It's a big part of our water system. And the levels that we've been testing lately have been higher in the past couple of test results, right, Jimmy? And what happens is the river, the reservoirs may exhibit elevated manganese levels during seasonal turnover in the spring and the fall. What happens when the dissolved manganese can rise toward the surface, it can be drawn into the water treatment plant. To fix that, you, you can purchase a mixer which will improve the water quality and lower the manganese concentrations by circulating oxygen into the water to maintain lower dissolved manganese levels. I'd like to bring in Bruce Adams and explain a little bit more detail on how the system will work. And if you have any questions about manganese, that's okay.
That's good. Thank you. Thank you. And go ahead, Bruce.
Thank you. So I'm Bruce Adams, Weston and Sampson Engineers. So I've been working with the town, oh gosh, about a year and a half now, testing the manganese levels in the finished water that travels into the water distribution system as well as the, the water in the reservoirs and the manganese levels in the reservoir. As Jay mentioned, the problem really usually gets worse in the fall when we get what's called reservoir turnover. When the manganese levels that are very high, usually in the low oxygen levels in the reservoir, when the surface water cools off and it, it drops down and then you get it, what we call a turnover, it brings that highly manganese rich water up the surface gets drawn into the water treatment plant. The water treatment plant isn't good at removing the higher levels of manganese and then it gets carried over into the distribution system where it precipitates and people complain about it. So the idea is to put a mixer and these are the most commonly used mixers are on solar powered. And they float out in the reservoir and the solar power just powers a motor and it very slowly causes water to pushes it down into the reservoir and then that reservoir rises. So it's just creating a very gentle circulation that, as Jay mentioned, keeps the oxygen levels very uniform within the water. And in doing that, the manganese precipitates out in the reservoir into the sediments and then isn't drawn into the water treatment plant. And if it's not drawn into the plant, then the water quality leaving the plant is much better. And that, you know, you know, rolls a toy down into the red, into the distribution system where it doesn't deposit on the inside of the pipes and then doesn't come out in your faucet. And it also makes the town's job easier because not as much flushing of water mains and the waste of water has to be done too. So it's, it's a kind of a comprehensive approach being done by many, many other water suppliers within the Commonwealth at this point in order to combat the manganese issues that they also have. So that's, that's really the issue in a nutshell. It's all about putting a, a floating solar powered mixer in the, in the reservoir that would run throughout the summer and into the fall especially.
Thank you. Sounds good. Jay, go ahead. Sorry.
Yeah, Madam Chairman, we would like to request 150,000 for this. And that would cover the estimate of design and through construction implementation. So that's kind of what we're looking for tonight.
And that's for the whole, that's both design and, and completion. Then it would be installed and, and, and working, right?
Correct, correct, Madam Chairman. Yep.
Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, is this something that could be? Is this a capital expense for water? Would this be under chapter 110 if town meeting were to appropriate instead of using ARPA funds?
I think DPW is looking to move as far as quickly as possible, which is the reason they're requesting ARPA funds to do it.
Yes. And if I may, Madam Chairman, it's been a problem for a long time. I think it's something that I think is designated for ARPA funds. This is something that we should be taking care of as soon as we can.
Do you, does someone have to date what we've spent in ARPA funds?
Yeah, I just, just as I was just sitting here, I tallied up. So to date, we've spent, allocated. Are you, you've approved 731,635 dollars in ARPA funds. So this would bring our, if we approve this request, it would bring our total to 881,635 dollars of approved funds.
And just to let everyone know, when we did do the priorities, this was number one on, on our list for ARPA funds. So just to give everyone an FYI, this is very important to DPW and the lawn sort of is and get this project moving.
Well, I would say that as they have noted, as DPW has noted, this is a longstanding issue. I can understand the concern about using ARPA funds for other purposes. We have a lot of things that we need to do and a lot of potential uses for the, the ARPA funds. It just seems like since this is longstanding and it goes to the water quality of people, you know, consuming our town water, that it's something that should be expedited. So that's, that's my position anyway.
Correct. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
And Beth, you have a recommendation as a town manager?
I mean, if this is certainly a, when you look at the ARPA guidance, it's certainly well within the range of projects that were anticipated as part of the ARPA funding. You know, I think in, in terms of being able to move and implement this as quickly as possible, ARPA funds do make sense. And I think as I, as I put in my letter, this is kind of the last, like, advance request that we'll have. And, you know, from here on out, I think the rest of the funds would be spent at the discretion of the board in terms of a ranking process for the remainder of the requests that we've received.
Yeah, I think also just to make a quick comment, yeah, I've heard complaints from several residents about this problem in particular. So it's, it's been there for a while. And I think, you know, I'd like to see it funded out of chapter 110, but I think that we've probably got a long list of other, you know, needs and priorities there as well. So it seems like this is one that makes sense for us to kind of remove from that queue and get on right away. So I'd be supportive of it.
Yeah, I mean, my, my only concern is that if, if we can fund this from chapter 110, then we can make the ARPA funds go further, right? And we can get further down the list of, of so many projects that we have from DPW and, and other. But, you know, if it's something that we have to do right away and we can't wait for, for springtime meeting, it's definitely a worthwhile project. But if I heard summer and fall and when I heard that, I, I thought, well, maybe we can, we can get it out of, out of chapter 110 and and then proceed with, with other projects with our funds, but.
And Jay or Bruce, you can jump in, but I know the levels are not as high as they have been, but they still continue to be higher than we would like, I think, in our
Right.
Supply.
So if I made a mistake, it's, it's the spring and the fall. If I said summer, I apologize. It's, it's the spring and the fall where, where this happens. So that's why I'm on a rush, got to get this done.
Maybe I've misheard. We've been meeting for four hours already.
The fall time is the worst and the intent is to get a design, we've got to get approval from the state with DEP Conservation Commission approval, bid it and then get it installed within about six months' time. And with supply chain issues, the units, it's getting harder to find them. So when you get them in a timely manner, so the sooner we can kind of get going, the better to get it installed for the fall when it's really needed.
Jay, just so I understand, this is your number one request under ARPA? Is that what you said?
Yeah, yes. Yeah, because it's a water quality issue. So there was one, that was our number one. Yeah.
Also the cheapest, I think.
It is the cheapest. I have many. I have like 15. We can go over right now. No, this is, like I said, number No, this is, like I said, number one on the list.
Yeah, and thanks for explaining the timing. I wasn't sure about it either. That's, that's part of the impetus to get it done now. Well, I mean, I imagine. Spring and fall, get it ready for the fall. I'm sorry. Again. Go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I would imagine, you know, DPW would be entitled to some, you know, projects under the ARPA funds. So if this is number one, then I'm fine to, to do that now for DPW and get this, you know, up and running for the spring.
All right. So I move that we appropriate a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the federal ARPA funds for the project for reservoir aeration for manganese.
Thank you.
Roll call vote, Rich.
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
Only get one, Jay, so this is it. So.
Thank you very much.
I just wrote it down.
Thank you.
All right. Have a good night, everyone.
Thanks, Bruce. Thanks, Jay.
All right. That brings us to Washington Swanton Street lot, or the property at Washington Swanton Street. And looking for an authorization to fund a work on the existing environmental situation.
So the, the town is contracted with VHB to complete a Phase One site assessment of the property. In the course of that review, they discovered some areas where the site was currently not in compliance with the Massachusetts Contingency Plan. And so they are, have proposed a scope of up to twenty thousand dollars to complete the groundwater sampling and to prepare submittals under the MCP to reestablish that compliance. There's approximately a hundred and ninety-two thousand currently in that Select Board Affordable Housing Fund.
And so since we, since the town owns that property now, it's on us to bring it back into compliance, which appears, you know, has kind of lapsed. So, and VHB has figured out what, what needs to be done and can implement that.
Right. And it's more of a, it's really more of a paperwork issue. I don't want to raise flags about kind of a non-compliance case. It's just getting the paperwork back where it needs to be.
Any questions?
No questions.
Okay.
I move that we authorize up to twenty thousand dollars from the Select Board's Housing Fund for VHB to complete the testing and submittals needed to reestablish compliance with the Mass Contingency Plan.
Thank you.
Roll call vote, Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Okay. And the working group for the transfer station.
So as I mentioned, I think might have been at the last meeting, I'm putting together a working group to discuss the long-term financial considerations for operation of the transfer station. That's the kind of recommended setup is town staff from DPW, town manager's office and the town clerk, two members of the Select Board, two members of the Finance Committee, and three members of town meeting, which will be appointed by the town moderator, I believe. Ms. Van Maring is already working towards that process. My original intent was kind of to wait until after the election to get things started after discussions with the Chair of Income. And I think it makes sense, and they requested to try to move things forward as quickly as we can to try and generate some additional revenue as part of the FY23 budget. So their request right now is for the board to appoint two members to sit on this working group so we can get started sooner rather than later.
And I guess part, part of the upside is that, you know, this would be to talk about the fees and financing of the operation going forward. So it's kind of, you know, getting a head start on, on understanding and setting fees once the project is done, the improvement project is done. So it's kind of beginning that labor now. But go ahead, Rich. Yes.
I was just gonna say, is there any consideration, you know, from the moderators in your discussions to putting some, some aspect of the commercial revenue source on the committee, you know, somebody who, you know, I think that's a big, big presence over there that, you know, a voice that maybe should be heard on that committee. If there's a way to, to do that, I don't know.
Yeah, it's not something that I discussed specifically with Ms. Van Maring, but I know that there was a town meeting member who sent an email with his interest in serving on the committee to her and other, other parties.
I'd be interested on serving on it. Anything that has Fincome, you know, financial impact or whatever I'm usually interested in, so.
Yeah, and if you want to start with one member and then after the election, you can, you know, see if somebody else.
That's a good point.
It's up to you guys. I can't imagine we're going to be a ton between now and, and the election, but we'll hopefully get started.
Thanks for volunteering, Mariano. Earmark, because this is the legislation, or asking legislators for earmarks, funding on the town, on the, on the state budget every year.
Yeah, we've gotten requests from Senator Lewis's office and Brett Day's office for us to submit our earmark request to them. It's typically three each. It's somewhere in the order of fifty, two hundred thousand dollars. So we've kind of brainstormed a little bit here and put together a list that I just wanted to, to bring before the board to make sure that there wasn't anything here that you were concerned about or anything that you thought should be included that's not listed. So the first was to, building on what we heard at the meeting a couple of weeks ago with the Conservation Commission, is to put in some requests for the Aborigine River Initiative project they're working on. And I do have a kind of preliminary information from the Labor Alliance about what they'd like, somewhere in the order of sixty thousand dollars for that request. The next one would be purchase of a new sidewalk snow removal equipment. So the equipment we have right now, although it does, you know, a good job, I think, there are, is newer and better equipment out there today that does a better job of really clearing the sidewalks. And there's Jay, maybe he's coming back on, clearing the sidewalks a little bit cleaner than maybe some of the equipment we have today, which I think would be a, a good, good thing for the town. Implementation of the town's downtown action, downtown improvement action plan. So this is kind of the traffic sort of master plan that we've been putting together for the town center that looks at pedestrian, car, traffic calming options. Further implementation of the water quality improvements that we've started at Winter Pond. So we have, we have VHB under contract to design a sediment control device at Winter Pond right now. The wedge, the next one is a wedge pond water quality study. So this is something we actually submitted as a capital request last year that was not funded. But there is a substantial water quality problem at Wedge Pond, which we all know, the closure of each every year. And so this is implementation of kind of a, a high-level water quality study to evaluate that. And then finally, the fire department has requested the, the purchase of some new ambulance equipment for the, for the backup ambulance that would have one to get the new ambulance that would help improve the functionality of that ambulance. So those were the kind of ideas that we, we came together with, Jay. I don't know if you want to say anything about the snow removal equipment.
I do. So by understanding, it's, we want to replace the, the little snow plow that comes, that leaves the giant boulders in your driveway after you with one of those snowblowing ones that, you know, is much more user-friendly for the person who's spent all, you know, a couple of hours shoveling out their driveway.
So, yes, I did plow in Select Board member Rich Mutchi the other day. But the kids got to school on time and safe. So to answer the question, we do need another machine. The holder is the newest machine we have. And the snow blower does give you that clean cut that the residents are looking for. And this machine will do it. I think it's a request of about a hundred and fifty-six thousand. It's a machine that we can use also, not like the Barmadees, we can use it as a mower, a small mower in the summer and the fall for blowing leaves. So, yeah, if we can get that machine, it'd be really appreciated.
And I had a question of the implementation of the downtown improvement action plan. Is that what Rep. Day and Senator Lewis secured as an earmark from the state ARPA funds, or is that?
No, that, that was for the local rapid recovery plan, which is the, there's too many acronyms. For hiring, it was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars towards implementation of the town's local rapid recovery plan, which I think the intent was to put it towards the hiring of an economic development consultant. So we're working to secure those funds through the state ARPA funds. That's a totally separate process. So we got two hundred and fifty thousand dollar earmarks, one for that L L, Local Rapid Recovery Plan Implementation, and one hundred and fifty thousand dollars to go towards the Town's Affordable Housing Trust funds. So that's a totally separate process. This is, as Susan said, for the state earmarks for the state budget process. The downtown action plan is, is, would be designed points to start designing some of the traffic calming improvements that we've had tool putting together over the past few years, or past year, so.
It's to implement some things, yes, that are already planned.
Yeah, and I mean, you know, fifty thousand, the, the design of those improvements are probably closer to, you know, two hundred and fifty to five hundred thousand dollars all told. So this would just be kind of a start in that process. And we might be able to pick one area that we could focus on a design for.
Okay.
Sorry. It's not implementation. It's a different track. Okay.
Yep. I think, I mean, I think you can, it can be used for design. This earmark process, you can use it for design or construction or purchase of equipment or whatever.
Okay.
Is there anything that folks don't see on this list that you'd like to see?
If we think of it later, in a couple of days, I mean.
Yeah, I'm hoping to probably next week kind of wrap these up. I have a call tomorrow with Brett Day's office. And then next week, try to get everything wrapped up and submitted to both the Senator and the State Rep.
So what do you need from us, Beth, for right now?
No, I don't think, nothing really. It was just more of a FYI, this is what we were thinking of and making sure we didn't think we were missing the mark anywhere. There's something you guys would like to have seen that wasn't included here.
No, I, I, I think just from my perspective, you know, there's a lot of good asks here, but, you know, I guess we're going to have to make choices at some point. And, you know, I like the Aborigine River Initiative implementation and the downtown improvement action plan. If we need to make choices, you know, it's some of the, the capital items, you know, we can kind of put in the capital queue and they're kind of depreciating assets. But I think there's, when we're looking at these action plans and implementation plans, I mean, that, that really is something to build on for years to come, right? So, and I think that, that's what I think works well for these particular earmarks. So, and I know, I think that some of the Aborigine River Initiative was funded, at least at, at one point, by an earmark that Senator Lewis had secured, you know, years back. So it's, it's good to keep moving that forward, because otherwise it's expensive and tough to fund. So.
Yeah. Yeah. So I think we can do three each. So the intent was to kind of submit all six and see, see if we can get any of them funded. Thank you.
Yep. And we have Waterfield Lot as a recurring item. We don't have anything to vote on right tonight. And we have Warrant Articles as a recurring item. And Mark did send us a list of what he's anticipating. A lot of it we've already talked about. Some of it is, you know, sort of a continuation of some of the things that we've, the board has been doing. But again, you know, it's the last call at this point, pretty much. And I think that's it, except for the consent agenda. Does anybody have any issues on any of those things?
Okay. If not, I move that we approve the consent agenda as printed.
Thank you.
And roll call vote, Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Apologize for this being so long, but, you know, we've just got a lot going on. I thank you for your patience.
Thanks, Susan.
Thanks, Susan. It's not ten yet, so. I'll wait five more minutes, but then I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Last time it was ten fifteen, so we're ending early tonight.
There you go.
So I move to adjourn.
Thank you.
Roll call vote, Rich?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mariano?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Thanks, Beth.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, Patty.
Take care.
Good night.